Okay.
Yes.
Test that real quick?
Yes, test that again.
Perfect.
Did you get all the mics on?
No, they turned them on themselves. There was two on the chair last.
Okay ladies and gentlemen, the time is seven o'clock. The call of the committee of order. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Misty, will you please call the roll?
Kara Hagan.
Yes, sir.
Georgia Holmes.
My mother.
Henry Kramer.
Here.
Bob Dawson.
Here.
Carol Ann Swartzabach.
Present.
Krista Salang.
Here.
Tim Tesher.
Here.
Skylar Wexel.
Here.
All perfect.
Okay, look at the adopting the agenda. Remind the council if there's any conflict of interest items, please note those at the appropriate time, and I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It moved and seconded, we adopt the agenda. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Motion carries. You have in your packets the minutes from the May fifteenth council meeting. At this time, I'll accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May fifteenth council meeting.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes from the May fifteenth council meeting. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, item A, bills in between. You should have a copy of those in your package. I'll accept a motion to approve the bills in between.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Opposed? Motion carries. The bills in between are approved. Item B, current claims. I'll accept a motion to approve the current claims.
Can you note the difference? Did you see the email I sent you today? That was really loud. There's a difference in the current claims on page one.
Okay.
The payment to Amanda Jensen went down from thirty-six seventy-five to twelve twenty-five. So, instead of seventy thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight dollars and six cents, the current claims totaled seventy thousand, seven hundred, thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'd like to make the motion with the removal. If you look at page four of the bill for MM towing for three hundred and thirty-six dollars and see if that can be paid by the individual's insurance who owned the car.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the current claims to delete the item of towing the vehicle back to Hot Springs for the police department to examine. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that that be removed from the current claims, that charge. We're voting on the amendment only at this time. All those in favor, or is there any further discussion first of all? All those in favor of removing that from the current claims signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
I'll abstain because I did not get that.
The motion does carry, so that will be removed from the current claims. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the current claims with the corrected amount that Misty read and with the removal of the three hundred some dollar charge of towing charge. Is there a motion to approve those current claims as corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims as amended.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the current claims be accepted as amended and corrected. Is there any discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Motion carries. Looking next to item C, the credit cards, you should have those in your package. Accept a motion to approve the credit cards at this time.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the credit card charges as corrected. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
I'll abstain again because I did not see them.
Okay. We have, next on the agenda, communications from the public. First off, there's someone here to demo the sound equipment of the new theater's speakers that will be used during the Mississauga Dakota Pageant.
We're doing it.
Okay. Is there any thing that you would like to show the performance and demonstrate these speakers for us?
Sorry, George, say that again.
Is there anything that you'd like to do to demonstrate the capability of the new sound system here in the theater?
You know, if he would like us to, he has some music up there that he could put in that you could listen to. If not, I would imagine that most of you could tell the difference just with the monitors that we have.
Sorry, I was just giving notice that Brian Spitzer had a family event come up where he interviewed his mom during an operation, so he's not here tonight. So, we have DB Sound, correct?
Yes.
Right there, we did the installation. This is their equipment they installed for us. And then Chris Jacky, obviously the facility director, back from vacation, welcome back, and is picking up right where Brian was unable to help out tonight. So, if you guys have a request for musical, something, I'm glad to hear that, otherwise it's just spoken word from here tonight.
Why don't you give us a minute or two of good music?
I need to fire my computer up because I just shut it down.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll tell you what, we'll just go ahead and move on. We've got...
Do these speakers stay here or do they get hung up somewhere? They get hung up. They'll be moving.
George, can they speak closer to the microphone?
They're not.
I can't hear everybody.
Yes.
They're not at a microphone, we'll move them over there.
Could you demonstrate to me?
Hold on a minute, Georgia.
Okay, thank you.
What you were playing when we came in was nice, just playing with us.
Thanks, Mr. Spitzer, for filling in. I know we didn't plan to do this.
Yeah, of course, happy to. You know, it's just from what I've heard, it is a complete one-eighty from what we have had up until now.
Is it difficult to operate?
No, it's...
Hey, Chris, do you want it for Georgia's sake and also for our recording, just do you like a phone on that end, please?
I like the sound of my voice enough as it is.
Let us do it.
Okay, thank you.
It's on.
Okay. It is quite a difference. The system that we had before, when it was in place fifteen years ago, it was serving its purpose. The theater has grown, I mean, this has been something that's been on my wish list for several years, but it's just something that we weren't able to do. With the Pageant's help and the agreement between the two, it's going to be a great benefit to the renters that we have now, like the Concert Association and groups like that, and people that we won't be able to bring in.
Chris, is the extension to the stage going to stay?
Yes, yeah, that's permanent. They just put in the tongue and groove and did the wainscoting on the front this weekend, I believe, and a little bit of staining, and it will be there permanently.
Great.
I'm running out of material.
Is it difficult to operate? You're one of the only city employees that knows how to operate it yet, right?
Correct.
Is it different?
No, it is, and that was part of my need behind it. It's a system that, it is very complicated if you want to make it that way. You can set all kinds of different scenes and speaker setups and the direction things go. Or, we have, like with the city council, we will have a one setting where you turn the power on and hit the council setting, and there you're at, your microphones. And in the same of what I did with the lights and the preset box to make it user-friendly, I will have, you know, like with the dance recital we had two weeks ago, I will have a setting that we can just click into, they can play their music, and that will take any interference from them away from the board.
Will the speakers that are on the stage have a permanent hole?
Well, it's depending on if they're needed, we'll pull them out. I have stands that we can set them on, but for, you know, council meetings and people that need them, they'll be on the stage. They're movable, so you get the best sound that you want.
So, there's some fixed and some not fixed?
Yes. These two are fixed. The large box to your right, off of the stage, is the subwoofer. They had wanted it to go under here, but it just didn't fit, so it's going to be off there to the side, and that is movable. It should be permanent. Essentially, we would like to cut a hole in the wall and put it there, but I don't know if that's feasible.
It's fine, we're done. We're gonna get in holes and they're there.
Right. These two are, they're fixed, they will not go anywhere.
One of those mics has a separate thing?
They do. They're all on their own channels. Go ahead, Dave.
Joseph Becker from what's not talking about that.
Oh, I heard it. Of any groups you state yet?
No.
No?
No.
We're the debut audience?
You are, you are.
Does anyone have a song to sing?
Having the city council be the first people to use it, it raises the stress level at all. Thank you, guys, for your patience.
Thank you.
The bar, that's the screen, the drop-down screen.
I can't think of any more words.
All right. I just hope we don't get a complaint from the neighbors. Very, very nice, very nice, good. Thanks for all the work. Chris and Miss South Dakota Pageant, we really do appreciate this being a very valuable addition to our Mueller sitting standard.
Thank you.
We have another individual that is asked to have some time, communications from the public, Mary Ackerman.
My name's Mary Ann Ackerman, I live on Wonderland Road in the county. I'm not, I do not live in the city, but I believe that this is seriously going to affect the city. Last week's paper on the front page was a listing of Joe Allen and one other commissioner that were bringing the noise pollution, that were bringing the noise pollution problem to the county, and they want to instill a five hundred dollar fine for anybody caught over eighty decibels. Eighty decibels is like my blender. It's like any truck going up the hill, anything. It's an unreasonable request. But my rebuttal comes out in the paper tomorrow, and they're voting tomorrow morning. So, nobody's going to get a chance to have anything to say. So, I'm asking if any of you can attend the county meeting tomorrow and try to affect the vote so that it doesn't badly affect the city of Hot Springs. I can read my rebuttal if you'd like, you have a printed copy up there, but my issue is if you start ticketing tourists five hundred dollars every time they make something over eighty decibels, that it's going to really be bad on our community. It's going to affect Hot Springs very adversely. Back in my day, one bad word of mouth went like ten places. In this day and age with social media, one bad word of mouth goes to every social page, every tourist page, every travel agent can pick that up and say, "Don't go there, they're not tourist friendly." And this is what I'm afraid of. And it's not, I mean, the way the article said in the paper, it was kind of aimed at motorcycles, but it was also aimed at jake brakes and any other noise affecting the two campgrounds, the KOA and Joe Allen's campground. My other issue is that Joe Allen is the one that brought it to the table, he's the one that wants it, and he also is a voting member of the county commission, and I think he should recuse himself from the vote, to be honest. That's just my opinion. But, so if anybody can think that that's a good thing, well, I think it's, I don't think it's a good thing. I don't think it's good for Hot Springs. I think anything that turns away tourists, you have a hundred days out of the year that you maybe have a lot of bikes. Trucks run. Everything that comes into Hot Springs is brought in nearby truck. You can't say they can't come in, but if you do this for a hundred days, you're just going to hurt our own tourism. It's like we're going, our county's going to shoot ourselves in the foot. They're going to have to purchase all the decibel meters, they're going to have, because our police cars aren't equipped with those, you're going to have to have a calibrated decibel meter because it's like a radar gun. If I say you're doing fifty and it's twenty-five, but I don't have a radar that shows that, you go to court and it goes away. So, it's an additional expenditure as well. If anybody, yeah, that's all I have things.
Okay, well, thank you. Again, this would be a county matter, we do not have it on our agenda.
Right.
And we'll trust that your vocalization and opposition will be heard and has a vote on it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it.
What time is the county commission meeting tomorrow?
It's at nine o'clock. This is scheduled for the agenda at nine forty, but I was told if the agenda moves along faster, it could be sooner. So, I would say nine o'clock, second floor, courthouse.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey, and I do support your comments. I can't be there tomorrow, but I'll send my comments with...
Okay. Are there any other communications from the public? Okay, if not, we'll move on to personnel. And what I'd like to do is take item A initially because we do have one abstention here on the council tonight, or conflict of interest. So, I'll accept a motion to approve item A under personnel at this time.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve item A under personnel. Is there any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
And the motion does carry. And I believe that we can take item B through item K as one action, accept a motion to approve those personnel actions at this time.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve items B through K under personnel. Is there any discussion or questions, comments?
I have a question. On item J, Colin Endwizzle, moving from head lifeguard to janitor, is that within the Evans Plunge still?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and those personnel actions are approved. Moving on to committee reports. Carol Ann, could you give us an update from administrative and finance, please?
We met today at noon. Old business, the library contract with Black Hills Special Services will be renewed with council approval.
Can you pass her to speak into the mic, hold the flare?
Pardon? She couldn't hear you.
She did.
She could hear you.
Okay. Old business, library contact with Black Hills Special Services will be renewed with council approval at the next council meeting on June eighteenth. This was recommended by the library board. Number two, city surplus property discussed, this is on tonight's agenda. New business, finance officer report was given. We discussed the radar grant for the police department. It was recommended for approval at the next city council meeting on June eighteenth, using existing budget for the city portion. South Dakota, well, it's SDPAA, what does that stand for, Misty?
South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, it's our insurer.
Coverage, well, their coverage was discussed for possible future use. The admin committee meetings, printed agenda and minutes were requested, there was no support for this. All recommendations from committees are included in council minutes. Two thousand and eighteen budget nomination request forms were reviewed, mid-years appropriations information was reviewed, Garden of Memories Plant One agreement was reviewed, there'd be a memorial bench for John Graff at Chautauqua, that'll be installed this summer. And last, the two thousand and eighteen, pardon me, update on our audit will be possibly late June, is that right?
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen, excuse me, two thousand sixteen. And that's all.
He's done already, but...
That's it.
Thank you, Carol Ann. Georgia, did the airport advisory committee meet? Do you have a... Thank you, Sharon.
The council meeting, I called and canceled it, but Ed did have something he wanted to report on, that he's busy moving the forest and that the tractor should be back by the end of the week, they had a problem with installing, and it needed to be serviced in rapid. Next Monday, they should be starting to pave the taxiway with asphalt, and he'll send out a note that will close the main runway and they'll have to use the grass runway in about three to five days. Electricity for the sign of the airport will need to be relocated due to the taxiway construction and additional money will be charged tonight, so we got coming up on our agenda. And I think that was all.
Okay. Thank you, Georgia. Moving on to Custer Fall River Waste Management, Andre.
That will be in July.
Okay. And our downtown historic preservation commission, Carol Ann?
Will be Wednesday at five PM at the library.
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Kara.
Okay. I have some numbers for May of this year. I'll compare to last year's numbers. Two thousand sixteen, the revenue was fifty-eight thousand, six twenty-four, twenty-one, and two thousand seventeen was sixty-three thousand, nine oh five, twenty-seven, so our revenue is up from last year by the amount of five thousand, two eighty-one, oh three. Our expenses, two thousand sixteen, were seventy-one thousand, four fifty-three, thirty-seven, and our expenses in two thousand seventeen were seventy thousand, four thirty-two, thirteen, so our expenses are down one thousand, twenty-one, twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Kara. Parks and Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Kristin?
Yes, we did meet today at three o'clock at City Hall, and old business discussed was the tennis court should be finished in about two weeks, depending on the weather. Number two is youth lighting has been installed on the baseball field, there has been a few games already played. Good comments have been received on these LED lights. There is still some fine tuning on the field that needs to be done, but it's ninety-five percent finished. There, number three was a review of the five-year plan for Hot Springs using Tall Grass Plan was discussed and will be in council packages as a reference for the upcoming budget.
Plans, grants?
Next council meeting. Number four, discussion on the no smoking signs was addressed, as there was a complaint from the public in an area where there was no signs, I think that was at the soccer field. The Parks Committee agreed that if more complaints were to come in, that it would address adding more signage for no smoking at that time. Currently, the areas that have no smoking signs are just in the playground areas. As far as new business goes, a donation of two city park benches and material for installation was accepted by, was accepted, one by Brookside and the other across from going up Minicotta, there's a bench there and it will be just on the opposite side going up Minicotta. Discussion about, discussion about getting the design plaques, quotes for them will be done this month. Quotes for them will be done this month. Number two, Keeping Hot Springs Beautiful had a meeting with Nolan to work on the tree ordinance, as they are interested in moving forward with the Tree City USA in July. Number three, parks update, trees are on a schedule for watering, and skateboard area has been looked at for caulking. Trees have been removed on the extension Freedom Trail and scraped, and crushed limestone or vines will be added soon to give the extension a good base. Number four, other committee member items was, it was brought to the attention of the Parks Committee that tables and benches are always seem not to be in the shelter at Chautauqua Park, even though the barbecue is there, and it really doesn't make any sense. So we did talk about that, and we felt like the best solution was to get more tables because speaking to the Parks guy, they do drag them out, but then they get put, dragged back under the shelters. So that was something that we'll be looking into in the future. Additional, number five addition, additional, the Rotary Club came before the Parks Committee. Ken Tunsutton spoke about the stage. He had more information on the design. He has also let us know that he has talked to Keep Hot Springs Beautiful and the Elks Club about adding extra money to cover a matching grant that they are seeking. At this time, he only wants to seek approval to submit a letter for the grant. If the grant was approved, the work on the stage would be donated by Spitzer's, and so the city match would still be somewhere approximately under $3,000. We don't know yet what the other matching grants will be at this time. So that will be in your packets for next council meeting, just about the letter, nothing else. Number four, Barbara Walters advised that disc golfer Tracy Burgler was willing to do a free training on disc golf clinic here in Hot Springs and is looking for some sponsors for rooms and meals for two days. She will bring discs to use, and she'll also have some that if a person is interested in buying. The contact person for that is Barbara Walters. So if anyone wants to get ahold of her to pursue that venue. Number seven, also, you received an email about the completed donation acceptance form for the playground equipment from the city of Lead. There was, the truth of that attached too. As far as the Mueller Center goes, voting is tomorrow from 7:00 to 7:00 here at the Mueller Center. And Ms. Dakota Paget is the 17th and 18th, and I'm sure that Nolan will have more about that. The next Parks meeting will be at 3 o'clock, July 3rd.
Okay, thank you, Krista.
Can I add something? The, did you find out, Nolan, about the water fountain at the Butler Park? The one that's by the concession stand that doesn't work?
Yeah, for the time being, it's not gonna be optimal, and it probably won't be for the season this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on to planning and zoning. Kim is not here tonight. One of the things I do want to bring up is that the planning and zoning commission did review our city surplus property list and provided some substantial suggestions as to how to use that property as a catalyst to provide workforce housing for Hot Springs, and we'll talk more about that later. Next is public safety. Bob?
Public safety met on the 17th at City Hall. Kim was with us, Chief Close, Jason Happy from the golf course, Mayor Cotti, Nolan, Tim, the animal control officer, and myself. We had two old business items. First one was the update on the police K-9 unit. At that time, again, this is a picture of time, two weeks ago. We were still waiting on that word. The K-9 unit is also an agenda item on the, on our list tonight to look at. We also reviewed the city's animal ordinance for swine and rabbits. I had talked about that last time. Looking at better defining pot-bellied pigs as pets. Nolan was able to reach out to some of the other communities to see what the wording of their ordinance has had as far as exotic pets and those kinds of things, particularly swine. So we're still looking at that. We had some new business items. Chief Close gave us a monthly update on the police department. Handicap qualifications for all officers has been completed. And Chief Close is also trying to schedule the two new uncertified officers to attend the police academy in August. By having both officers attend the academy at the same time, the police department will be short-staffed for only three months versus the six months. If they went one after the other for the three months, it would be six months. That's what he's trying to do at this point. We also talked about parking in front of the Southern Hills Golf Course clubhouse. Jason talked with the committee about the parking issues in front of the clubhouse. Because the road in front of the clubhouse is narrow, if parking is allowed on both sides of the road, the flow of traffic can be difficult. The public safety committee recommends making both sides of the road in front of the clubhouse as no parking, with the exception of the two existing handicap spaces. We also had a citizen approaches regarding aggressive dogs and city ordinances. Citizen spoke to the committee about the city ordinance that deals with dogs that bite. Their mother was bitten while walking within the city. Some suggested changes or additions to the ordinance are better defined what a dangerous dog is and what action should be taken if a dog attack occurs. Public Safety Committee will continue to review the ordinance for possible changes. Kim also spoke with us about emergency preparedness, specifically flood emergency preparedness for, within the city. She provided a boilerplate document that can be changed to meet the needs of the city, and Nolan's also found some other documents that we can use to help us put together a flood emergency preparedness plan, so we'll be working on that. The Department of Transportation will also need an easement for new lights by Maker Park. It'll be a temporary easement that will be needed by the Department of Transportation for installation of lights along Highway 18 at the south end of town. The next meeting will be the third week of this month, third Wednesday of this month, at City Hall at 2 o'clock.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And you're up next with Public Works.
Public Works met on May 30th at City Hall. Tracy was with us, Mayor, Nolan, and myself. The agenda for Public Works is a little busier. I'll just highlight the items that aren't ongoing in that sense. We talked about replacing the sewer line in the alley of West 16th Street and the sewer line of Baltimore Avenue. Those projects will be beginning soon with the one on Baltimore Avenue being completed first. That one has already had a Madhole order for it, and the one call request has been made. We had talked about a ditch problem on North Fourth Street. The city crew has already completed that, and a thank you to the city crews that worked on correcting the drainage problem. Evans Plunge roof bid opening, three bids were received for replacing the Evans Plunge roof. The low bid that met the specifications was from Weathercraft for a cost of $222,922. This would be a direct replacement of the roof and have a 25-year warranty. Insurance will cover 100% of the cost minus the $500 deductible, and Public Works is recommending accepting a bid from Weathercraft for the replacement of the Evans Plunge roof. Surplus building, property of Biltful City lots. What to do with the three lots identified by the council as surplus, Biltful City lots was discussed. The three lots were the old water fill station property, the armory property, and the old water tank property. Memo addressing options for each of these properties is included in your package tonight. There was also discussion about extending, extending the sewer line on Fresno Avenue, and there will be a no immediate action. There's no immediate plans to install the sewer line extension on Fresno Avenue. I'm still asking awful lot about the Piedmont Sun's mining contract out at the airport. I'd like to assure the public that the mayor is doing what he can to try to get that sped up. When you deal with the government, you pretty much deal on their terms, but it is a continuing ongoing discussion. So we're trying to get that taken care of. The last open item business, or the last old item business is the downtown street painting and marking of Thompson Street. Weather permitting, the painting of downtown and Thompson Street is expected to begin this week. The painting will be done in the early morning when traffic is the lightest. We had four new business items. The 2017, 2018 big grant for the Jennings Bridge. The city wasn't approved for a big grant to replace the Jennings Bridge in 2017. We only scored 39 points. To increase the city's chance of being awarded a big grant in 2018, the city will need to increase our point total to over 50 points. One way to do this is to have the engineering firm working with the city on the replacement of the bridge, repair, show ready plans for the bridge replacement. Bros Engineering estimates the cost of preparing these plans is $95,800. The cost of preparing these plans will be necessary regardless of when the bridge is built. And two possible sources for the funding of the plans is from the 212, 212 sales tax fund or the general fund. The Public Works Committee is recommending spending the $95,800 to have Bros prepare show-ready plans for the construction of the Jennings Bridge. We also did a review of the bid for the Boulder Falls Street Improvement Project. Three bids were received for that street improvement project. The low bid of $1,595,808 is from Quinn Construction. This is about $500,000 less than the original estimate. Approval of the bid should be an agenda item tonight. It's on the agenda. The Public Works Committee is recommending approving the bid from Quinn Construction. If the council approves the bid, Quinn Construction has ten days to sign the contract and then proceed with construction. Doran Road reconfiguration. Currently, the section of Doran Road used to access the city water tank doesn't allow, doesn't follow the city right-of-way. Doran Road will be reconfigured to follow the right-of-way, which will provide a more direct route to the water tank. The work is expected to be completed in-house and began in late summer. And the last item we had was the chip and seal city streets. And the 2017 budget, the council approved $50,000 for chip and seal of city streets. For that amount, Tracy estimates, estimates approximately 17 blocks of city streets can be chipped and sealed. Tracy will work with the street department, determine what streets are recommended to be chipped, chipped and sealed. I believe our next meeting will be next Tuesday, 2 o'clock at City Hall. Everyone, welcome.
Thanks, Bob. Very detailed report, lot going on in Public Works. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, excited?
Yes, we did have a meeting on May 22nd. We talked about creating a rules committee that Dave Merrill would be in charge of. We also talked about adding a new committee member who is on the agenda tonight. We also approved our pin placement sheets. Also, I was just informed that Shields has committed to do a demo day and a club fitting on June 16th from 12 to 4 on the range. So I want to say thank you to Jason, who got that set up.
You called it a demo day field fitting? Club fitting.
Club fitting. And that should be a good, a good opportunity for people that are coming in for the Father's Day tournament, if they're interested in getting new clubs. It's a good, good opportunity for them to see what's, what's available. Volunteer Fire Department, Andrea?
Second Tuesday of the month, so it'll be the 13th at 7 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll move on in the agenda to new business. Item A is a discussion and possible motion to award Boulder Falls Road Improvement Project bid. You've seen the bid tabulations in your packages. You've heard the report from Bob. We had three bids that came in. The winning lowest bid was from Quinn Construction Company Incorporated out of Rapid City. That's great news for the city because as per the settlement agreement, the city, the homeowners association, those lot owners will have a fixed price from the property owners, and of course, the city will have the rest of the, of the loan. There'd been a lot of confusion with rural development as far as how we go about approving this at the council, and I think late this afternoon, we got that all sorted out. And what we want to do tonight, or what we're recommending to do as a council, is that we have a motion to approve the Boulder Falls paving project, be awarded to Quinn Construction Incorporated of Rapid City, upon rural development's concurrence. And then I would also ask that with that motion, the mayor be given the authority to sign the notice to proceed. And the reason for that would be because if we have to go back to rural development, that will delay us getting the contract started. Subsequent to all of this, probably at the next meeting, we will be looking at getting a motion for the loan amount. Rural Development has some work to do because the bid came in so low, they will have to de-obligate some money and recalculate the loan payments that will have to be made. So we're delaying that approval to approve the, the closing of the, of the loan. So with that being said, I guess I would accept a motion that the Boulder Falls paving contract be awarded to Quinn Construction of Rapid City upon rural development concurrence, and that the mayor be given the authority to sign the notice to proceed. And obviously, that would be with the concurrence of rural development. And I guess we're waiting.
You want me to make that motion? I think I copied down what you said. I want to make a motion to award of Boulder Falls, can I say, improvement bid project to Quinn Construction of Rapid City upon rural development's concurrent, and authorize the mayor to proceed. When I receive, when I receive that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, then we award the contract to Quinn Construction. Is there any discussion?
Are we okay at doing this? If this was something that was discussed today at admin and finance meeting, and if it was, and if it was approved by them to be presented to the council, are we not supposed to wait one whole?
We, we didn't talk.
Yeah, this wasn't discussed.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Boulder Falls has been on several agendas, so the public is well aware of that.
I thought Carol Ann had mentioned that the bids were discussed at the meeting today. Oh, okay.
No.
Okay. Just for my own clarification, though, there are a lot of other things that it sounds like they were discussed, and I'm just asking if we are okay to vote on them, even if they were approved by the, by the meetings, committee meetings this week? Are we still okay to vote on them tonight? Or are they supposed to wait a whole till the next council meeting?
If it's been discussed previously, the bid amounts, and the public had notice of them, you're fine with voting off. And I'm assuming?
There is a notice, yeah, there, there was a bid opening and notice to bidders and bid opening all published in the paper.
And again, there's a, you know, a sense of, of urgency to ensure that this gets done within the construction season.
I'm not against it. I was just making sure that we didn't vote, and then now we're in trouble because we didn't.
And I appreciate that, that concern, Andrea. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other discussion?
George, can you give me the amount, because I could not give that to my tax. That we gave the group, the amount that we gave. George? To Quinn Construction.
Would you like me to give it?
Yes, go ahead, if somebody's got it.
It's $1,595,808.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Was there a start date?
No, there is not, because we're waiting concurrence from rural development, and we're also, and that gives us the authorization to give a notice to proceed. And so what we're doing tonight is approving the contract so that we can get that concurrence from rural development, to get a notice to proceed.
And then it'll be 10 days after.
I understand that part. My question is, when these guys bid this, was there a start date on the? My question is, when these guys bid this, was there a start date on the bid?
10 days after they accepted.
After they accepted.
After we accept them and he gives them the notice to proceed, it's supposed to start within 10 days.
And that's why we can't get that.
I just don't want, you know, Quinn Construction sitting there thinking he's going to start a week.
September or something. We don't want him to start in September.
We just, we want him to know that we accepted the bid tonight and that's what we're voting on. And plus, the opportunity to give them the opportunity to proceed. Any other questions or comments? Obviously, a very big and very important project for...
Listen, George, did we have a closing date on our bid then or what did you ask?
I didn't understand what your question was, Georgia.
Of the, of close, when they are done, a completion date?
Completion date?
The completion date is in October.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any other comments, questions? Misty, since this is such an important vote, I would ask that you would call a roll, please.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartzembach?
Yes.
Kristis Belain?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion does carry. Item B, discussion and possible motion to award the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Roof System Replacement Bridge bid. And again, you should have a memo provided in your council package. The recommendation from the Public Works Committee is to approve Weathercraft. Weathercraft submitted a bid without the cover board and it was actually the only bid that did qualify and meet the bid specifications for the 25-year warranty. And what this will do, it'll cost the city only $500 due to the roof replacement being covered by our insurance policy. I'll accept a motion at this time to award the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Roof System Replacement Project bid to Weathercraft.
I will make a motion to award Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Roof System Replacement Project bid to Weathercraft Roofing.
I'll second that.
Does anyone have the other?
It's been moved and seconded, then that we award the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Roof System Replacement to, for Weathercraft. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have one because without the cover board, that would be in our bid or not?
I can't understand that.
Be without.
It would put in that we didn't need it or what? I guess I'm not understanding what the reason is without the cover board.
Well, the reason for not having the cover board on the, the roof was because the roof is guaranteed for 25 years whether it has the cover board or not. And if we wanted to add the cover board, it would cost us an additional amount. I don't have that money.
Twenty-two thousand?
It would cost us another $23,000-plus dollars to install that. And the Public Works Committee decided that we did not have the funds available to, to buy that extra protection. And since the roof is covered and guaranteed for 25 years, we felt that was the best, most efficient economical decision to be made.
So we can have a cover board on there now or what is on there right now?
No, no, we don't, George. This is no longer here. That's, that's why there'd be additional cost. Our insurer covers a one-to-one replacement. If we added the cover board, that's considered by the insurer an enhancement of our current system, which would then result in our additional almost $24,000.
But you need to speak closer to the mic. I can't understand it.
We do not have a cover board in place currently. That's why there's a difference in cost. The insurer only covers a one-to-one replacement, which is the, what's being recommended by Public Works. If you want to enhance what we currently have, the enhanced cost would be that $24,000 for the additional five years of warranty.
That's, that's back, okay.
Okay, any other comments, discussion? If, if not, again, since this is a, a very large and important item, I will ask for a roll call.
Did we, did I miss the motion in a second?
I made the motion and...
Carolyn, second.
Sorry, I missed that. I was so wrapped up in the good discussion.
All right. Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
I don't know.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartzembach?
Yes.
Kristis Belain?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
The motion does carry. Item C is discussion and possible motion to set a special meeting on June 12th at 12:30 PM at City Hall to canvass election and declare the results by resolution. I'll accept a motion to, to set that special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, then we set a special meeting on June 12th at 12:30 PM at City Hall to canvass election and declare results by resolution. Any questions, comments, or discussions?
Is this a paid meeting?
Yes.
Unless we vote to not be paid, it's up to the council.
And I suggest you put that in your meeting, in your motion that it is paid or not paid at this time.
We need to do that now?
You don't have to. It could be an agenda item at the meeting, or you could do it now and make the decision now as council.
Previously, we voted at the meeting.
Again, if there's a desire to do that and make that motion, would you be willing to amend your motion or... Will, are there, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of setting a special meeting on June 12th at 12:30 at City Hall, canvass election, declare results by resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion does carry.
We will need at least six of you guys there to do that meeting. We'll need at least six present to do the meeting, or sorry, five present to do the meeting down the hall, which I think we should be able to, yeah, based on head counts.
Okay, item D is a discussion and possible motion to sign engineering services agreement for the Jennings Avenue Bridge with Bros Engineering. Again, you have this information in your packet. Basically, what we're trying to do by allowing Bros to do the engineering on the Jennings Bridge is to gain 10 additional points for our 2018 big grant application. And we feel it's important to do that since road construction will begin a year or two later after getting that bridge repaired. That is a vital artery to have our emergency vehicles have access to the main part of our community and that bridge is, as you know, deteriorating. And so this 10 points would give us the advantage and possibly put it into an area where that we can gain enough points to land that application. I would accept at this time a motion to, to sign engineering services agreement with Bros Engineering for that Jennings Avenue Bridge.
I'll make that motion to sign engineering service agreement for the Jennings Avenue Bridge with Bros Engineering. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we, we do sign the engineering services agreement for the Jennings Avenue Bridge with Bros Engineering. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Can I ask you a question? Is this something we'd have to pay for anyway at some point, this engineering?
Yes, it is, we would...
This is an expense we're going to have.
The, the question. We would have to, if awarded the grant, pay at least 20% of that cost, but we would never necessarily get the grants with our current score. We're at 39 this year. They're between 52 and 49, so we're 10 points off, which is pretty far based on their scale. So if we don't pay ourselves now, we won't be competitive for at least, I would say, five to 10 years, if, if not longer.
Share the total cost of the project to replace this bridge on our own. It would cost us over $2 million. So getting the grant is a big deal towards getting the bridge replaced.
And the grant itself, Rosy Gilberg, would almost not...
And then add a later, go ahead, Tim. I'm sorry, interrupted.
Sometimes, so we did decide to do this $2 million bill...
Use your mic, Tim, from Georgia, I can hear you.
$2 million bridge rebuild, would we have to do the $95,000 engineering?
If we were to do it ourselves, yes. That'd be a cost we'd have to incur. The benefit here is we have them do this for us and submit our application and we're very competitive for grant funding for the actual construction base of the...
In other words, it's pay now or pay later?
Essentially, yeah. Thank you.
And the only other option that we have to improve our chances would be to increase our funding amount that we would, we would share in the cost of, of redoing the bridge. And that's a decision that we'll have to make at a later date. This is just simply for the engineering, not...
And when was this recommended by Public Works? This goes back to my question. Was this something that was just done at this last meeting and are we okay to vote on it?
It's been...
Has it been a whole, a whole meeting?
Yeah, we, we discussed the Bros replacement bridge now, this year, multiple times dating back to, I believe, April, when we found out that we weren't awarded it. And now at the last meeting, we went through the details, yes, and said this is the time of the decision of this meeting tonight, and that's where the recommendation was made.
We actually discussed this several meetings ago. It pays for different type of grants, so it's not...
And this is by us voting on this, this is saying that we're using the 212 fund in order to pay this $95,000.
We haven't decided what fund the money's coming from. We'll have supplemental appropriation coming up mid-July, beginning of July, so we'll identify it. And probably in Admin Finance will probably talk about it there, which funds we can get.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? And again, since this is a, a large budget item, Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartzembach?
Yes.
Kristis Belain?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion does carry. Moving on to item E, we have for a number of, well, I guess ever since I've become mayor, we've been talking about the plan to utilize our excess city, or how we are going to utilize our excess city properties. And we've met with members of council, with the Planning and Zoning Commission to come up with a tentative plan. And I want to say that this is simply a plan. Each item on this plan would be approved by council as, as we would go to undertake it. But basically, what we've done is identified four excess city properties. The old water fill station, Butler Park Armory, the old water tower lot, and the South Garden lots. And one of the things that, the two lots that have buildings on them that need to be destroyed or taken down would need an environmental assessment. Shedco has offered to help us to get a grant to accomplish that research, to see if there's any environmental problems on those properties, also to assess what needs to be done and assist with the possible cleanup. We will, as a city, pursue matching grant with South Dakota's Office of Economic Development to tear those buildings down. And initially, that has run into a little bit of complications since GOEDs. It was houses that they wanted torn down in communities and replaced with other houses. And I did point out that by tearing down a, a garage, for example, that's substantially less than tearing down, it would cost to tear down a house, we gained for the possibility of at least a minimum of four workforce houses on those lots. So they are relooking that and will be getting back to us. And what we as a city would do would be submit a request for proposal to allow prospective developers to come up with their plan of how they would help us meet our need for workforce housing through that proposal. And it could be a variety of different ways, as spelled out in the housing plan. You can see the estimates for the various lots. And those RFPs would have specific time limits that that work would need to be done so that we wouldn't have excess property growing weeds and nothing being done on it. And we've got the same thing for the Butler Park Armory property. The old water tower lot is, would be for sale as is, no stipulations for use. We could either sell the land outright through a listing or at an auction. And there are also two Garden Street lots that people have expressed an interest in that are buildable on South Garden Street. That would require council approval to list those as surplus property. And we could get, we would not stipulate what would be built on those. The Butler Park Armory property is, also has its own complications. We would go through the same process with the Shedco review of the environmental issues with that property of tearing down the armory. The city would attempt to purchase the neighboring lot located just north of the armory, and we would do that with funds generated from the sale of other properties. And the reason that we wanted, this planning zoning agreed that this would be the most efficient way for us to connect sewer, sewage and water to that, that property. If we didn't have, because that armory is right up against the property line, we would have to get a, any, we would have to get an easement to tear that building down and that would also be quite, could be quite costly. And again, we see that there could be at least a, a minimum of three workforce housing units that could fix in that neighborhood, and we'd go for an RFP to have that developed. And the reason that I wanted to bring this forward as a motion was so that we would have a plan and a direction that we know that we're going in. Again, reminding you each step of the way that the council would have need to approve each of the actions as they take place so that, but, but as a result of us approving the plan, we are sending a, a notice that we can be a catalyst to our developers, that we do have land available if there is interest in taking that, that step forward to provide that workforce housing that we so desperately need. Are there any questions? And if not, I would accept a, a motion to approve that plan.
When, when did this plan come out? I mean, is this, what's just happened in the last month or...
Well, we've been talking about excess housing for a long time and developing various portions of it. The last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, these issues solidified.
I guess the reason I ask that question is because it says the city would attempt to purchase neighboring lot on the Butler Park Armory property. Well, that property up there's been for sale for about four years.
Do we need a...
Do we need a motion and a second and then discussion?
If we want to go ahead and discuss this specifically, yes, you're right, we do.
I'll make a motion to approve plan to utilize excess city properties.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are we now open for discussion?
Anyway, back to my question before, I wasn't going to interrupt you. I've noticed that this property joining the Butler Park Armory property has been for sale for four years. The city comes out with this plan that says we would attempt to purchase the neighboring property, and all of a sudden, there's a sale pending sign on it. So I'm wondering, and that sign came up before I had seen this plan. So it kind of makes me wonder if maybe there isn't somebody somewhere that's going to take advantage of the city, knowing that they're going to be looking at that piece of property.
Well, if that property is for sale, and if that sale pending and that property owner does buy that and wants to charge more than what the lot is worth, we don't have to accept that, and we would move on. And that would be up to the council to make that determination and that decision. And I agree, the very, the very night that we put this plan together, I drove home and saw that sale pending sign, my heart sunk. So that's very, very good observation.
I thought last meeting, we discussed the old water tower lot, and it was mentioned that it was, we as the city, have already given it or sold it or somehow.
Okay, Andrea, that, this is, there's two different old water tower lots that we're talking about.
So it's not the one on 23rd?
It's not the one on 23rd.
Thank you.
This is the one that's up on Happy Hollow with the, still with the tank there. The one on 23rd, the city gave away.
That's what I thought.
And you see with no strings attached, and you see what's happened to it.
Thank you.
So that's why we want to have some control over, you know, what's being done with the property.
I'd just like to comment that there, you know, there are a lot of open areas on this. We don't know how much it's going to cost. It's just kind of an open proposal with a lot of fill in the blanks. And there are four new council members that will probably be addressing this, because I can't see it coming back in two weeks. And I'd like to see the next council involved in this. I think it's important.
As with all the appropriate committees, because this is, you know, we're trying to assist and meet a need within our community that will, that has been identified. So we do have, and that's why we've got stipulated that each step, the council has to be involved in and approve. There any further questions, comments, or discussion?
I have some comments. My understanding of what you're proposing to us now is, tonight is, it's a plan or a process for identifying what could happen to each of these three, actually four now, because the South Garden Street lots have been added to, to identify what each of those specific properties would require, and that would be done through the request for proposal. Tax incentive has been discussed, and there's some concern about what is the right way to do the tax incentive. But all those specifics are going to be identified in each of the respective requests for proposals. So accepting this plan tonight in no way obligates this council or a future council to any particular action, expenditures, anything like that. Simply giving the city permission to go forward and identify through the request for proposals what the city feels is the best step forward for each of these properties. Is that correct?
I think that's a very, very good summary, Bob. We've been discussing the various options, two different committees, and this is just kind of putting those discussions in one specific direction. Again, as needs change, as opportunities change, we can or don't have to follow this, or we can go a different direction at each or some of the properties. But what we want to do, I think one of the purposes is to send a message to the developers within our community that we do have some land available, that the city would be willing to work as a catalyst to get that, those issues solved. There any other comments or discussion?
Uh, George, this is Georgia. I've been on the Housing Committee for quite a while. We've looked at so many things, we'll need to get property.
George, I can't understand her. Could she speak a little bit louder?
And one thing that I have a question about is that, well, we have a water fill station that was a gas station. Do we have any tanks or anything in there?
Well, that's why we are asking for the Shedco grant to assess the environmental And they would determine whether there are any tanks and what the remediation process would be, and that grant would help fund that.
Okay, because I think that was a gas station, but it just leaves me concerned. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll just ask, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we'll begin heading in that direction. Item F, discussion, motion to sign temporary easement with DOT for Ummaker Park lighting lot for highway light installation. And what this is, is an easement for the installation of highway lights along the truck bypass in 2018. Project is funded by DOT, and the work will be done and coordinated by DOT. And we would be compensated $300 for approving this easement. I'll take a motion to grant this temporary easement with DOT.
I'd like to make that motion to grant a temporary easement for DOT for Ummaker Park city lot for highway light installation.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we grant this temporary easement for highway light instructions. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is a discussion and possible motion to sign a DOT joint powers maintenance, encroachment, and financial agreement for one foot, additional foot of footing per pole, that would be on four poles, to accommodate wayfinding signs. This has been discussed several times at Admin and Finance. It was decided that the city could actually internally design the signs and the sign layout. Four of the new light poles that are being installed along the bypass are being placed in locations where we can add those wayfinding signs. The issue is, we're trying to get people to the golf course, hospital, library downtown and so forth, putting those signs up. It creates an additional wind load on the pole itself, so they need additional footing to accommodate that. The cost is $100 per pole, four of them. And again, that fits our very, very important concept of being able to tell people where things of interest are here in Hot Springs with attractive ways, way signs.
I'd like to make a motion to sign SD DOT. Wait a minute, where am I here?
You're right.
Am I in the right one?
Yeah.
Joint Powers Maintenance, Encroachment, and Financial Agreement for one foot, additional foot of footing per pole for, to accommodate where it's very wayfinding signs.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we add this one foot of footing to accommodate our signs. Any discussion, comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next is item H. We want to add some no parking near the clubhouse. The restricted area in front of the clubhouse is, we want to be used for 15-minute unloading zone for parking there, and maintain the two handicap spots in front of the clubhouse. The rest would be no parking. This has been reviewed by both the Golf Course Advising Committee at the past several meetings, along with Public Safety. And the recommendation that Public Safety came up with was to institute temporary parking on both sides of the street in front of the clubhouse. That would be for the unloading of clubs and getting people out onto the golf course, and then keeping the two handicap spaces already marked, and the rest of that area around the clubhouse would be zoned, no parking. I'll accept a motion to add those, add that no parking area at this time.
I'll make a motion to add no parking near clubhouse, restricted parking in front of the clubhouse for 15-minute parking only, and maintain two handicap parking spaces in front of the clubhouse.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we rearrange the parking in front of the clubhouse has been, has been moved. There any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I is a possible motion to withdraw the K-9 grant application. You have a memo in your package from Chief Close, is included in your packets. I may add to that memo, if this grant is given, we will be down a couple officers this summer attending the Police Academy also, which should present some manning issues if the K-9 grant were approved. You do have the information in your package. I'll accept a motion at this time to withdraw that K-9 application.
I'll make the motion to withdraw the K-9 grant application. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we withdraw the K-9 grant application. And again, the timing on this is, before we would get the grant and then deny it once we got it, that would put other communities that possibly applied for that in jeopardy. There any discussion?
I'd just like to comment that I appreciate Bob Nelson's looking into this and furnishing us with some additional information about this that I feel was important in making this decision, other than what's in Chief Close's mind.
I'd like to say I'm actually kind of disappointed that the, it didn't go through. We voted on it once, and then it was brought up by, I feel, a conflict of interest by somebody on the council. I'm actually also very saddened to know that the school will not have the opportunity to have a drug dog, and that the, the community is not going to be able to have this resource available to all of us. I realize I'm the only one up here that has kids in the school system, but it really does sadden me, I guess, that this is, that it's just, I don't know, the community could have definitely used this as a, as a resource to keep the drugs out of here, and it's not going to solve the problem, but at least it would help. I will honor Chief Close's and the, and the Police Department's wishes to vote, to withdraw the grant against my actual feelings, thanks.
Yeah, appreciate your comments, Andrea. Any other?
I have to say, yeah, I have to say, I have to say, I know that everyone's going to be supported by the council, and if we did ever come back from your business again, I'm sure things would be worthwhile.
Okay, and I think for those of you that may not have heard, Georgia said that it would be, the possibility that it could be readdressed at a later date would be appreciated too. Any other comments, Bob?
Yeah, I have some comments. I shared with everyone on the council, the meeting that I had with South Dakota Highway Control. So I don't know if I'm the one that has a conflict of interest or not. I am disappointed in the chief's memo to us when he's talking about a recent contention. If asking questions about expenditures on behalf of the city is contention, well, then I'll, I'll take that. As I stated in my memo to everyone, everyone that I've talked with, that's been three people who have dealt with drug dogs, who've said that drug dogs are an invaluable tool if the city has the resources to support. So if you read through my meetings, I gave a number of officers I spoke with in South Dakota Highway Control. If anybody wants to talk with them and see if there's a, if I've misrepresented what's there, but I made a point to say that a drug dog can be a great asset if the city, the community can afford the cost. I'm not sure where my conflict of interest comes, but I hope you're interested in all that, so thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to thank the police officers that did all the time, spent all the time putting into this grant. I'm sorry that there was a misunderstanding when we voted on it the first time. However, good luck the next time around. I'm going to go along with Officer Close also on his recommendation. My gut feeling is that sooner or later, we're going to wish we had had that dog with the drug problem we've got here, but evidently, the drug problem is secondary to the finance of the city. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor of withdrawing the K-9 grant application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have item J, motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application for Hot Springs Mall for the Missup Co. Social Hour to be held at the Mueller Civic Center on the 17th of June. I'll accept a motion for that at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary alcoholic beverage license application for Hot Springs Mall for Missup Co. Social Hour to be held at the Mueller Civic Center, June 17th.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept that temporary alcoholic beverage license application. Any comments, questions, or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item K, we do have a motion to set a hearing on June 19th at 7:10 for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License for Crystal Patties. This is a business that's located where the former Mexican restaurant was downtown, across from the water mall. I'll accept a motion to set that hearing at this time.
I'll make a motion to set a hearing on 6/19/17 at 7:10 for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License for Crystal Patties.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set the hearing on June 19th at 7:10 p.m. seven ten P M. Are there any comments, discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion does carry. Moving on to item L, we have a sign change order for a partial parallel taxiway construction that's going on totaling sixty-four hundred dollars. This was a sign that was believed not to have to require electricity for lighting. As a result, they do need the lighting on the sign, it's a whole sign, the taxiway runway intersection. As a result, the increased cost is sixty-four hundred dollars. This will most likely qualify for reimbursement from the FAA and state, making our share five percent of that sixty-four hundred dollars. And you should have some more information in your packet on that particular issue. I'll accept the motion to be able to sign that change order for the partial parallel taxiway.
Georgia, this is Georgia.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to do that sign change in for the parallel parking, uh, parallel, partial parallel taxiway for sixty thousand four hundred dollars.
Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we sign that change order for the, for the sign. Is there any questions, comments or discussion?
I have a question. In our packets, there's some paperwork from S E H, a request for FAA approval. Do both those go with this motion?
Yes, that we are consulting engineer that's overseeing the project.
Now, on the S E H change order, they're identifying eight thousand dollars for the change order, the motion is for sixty-four hundred.
Good catch, that's, that's spot on. Above that though, in the paragraph states that there's a salvage value to the equipment being removed, twenty-six, that's the difference, but you're absolutely right, that's how it is.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving this change order signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M is a motion to establish a line in the five oh one fund for baseball softball capital improvements. And what we've got is a situation where the instructors and assistants for the summer rec baseball and T-ball program would like to use the money that we as a council budgeted for their salaries to instead be reallocated toward a baseball softball improvement fund that can roll over each year. To do this, we need to create the fund and transfer the funds at the end of the season via an appropriation and ensure all those wishing to participate acknowledge that they would be acting as volunteers in helping those baseball and softball programs out. I accept a motion at this time to establish that five oh one fund for the baseball softball capital improvement.
I'd actually like to make a motion to table this until next meeting, until some additional information is understood. And it is not that the coaches want to donate their time. The reason that they want to donate their time is that they do not have the appropriate equipment for the amount of kids that they have and they don't have any other way to get this equipment. So it's not, last year they donated their time to coach these fifty kids as well. It's, they all have families too and they're committing a ton of time to coach these kids. And again, it's not that they are wanting to donate their time, they have no other way to get this. Currently, they have one set of gear for the four different teams and again, it's, it's not, it's just, there's more to it than, than just wanting to create an account and put that money into there. If you break it down, that those kids pay thirty dollars each to, to participate in that, which is about fifteen hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars of that goes to team fees to Shadrin. Maybe it's something to look at and find out, you know, what they possibly, what their requirements are. And then they do have to pay about four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars a year for ump fees as well. So out of the fifteen hundred dollars that's collected from the city, there's about twelve hundred dollars that actually goes out to the team fees and to the umps, which leaves about three hundred dollars left. So there is actually money left over that could be used towards team or towards gear. And so I just ask that, possibly we table that, to look at it a little bit more so the kids are safe and they have the appropriate gear so they don't get hurt.
Okay, we do have a motion that table item M. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that, that we table item M.
George, can we address some of those comments?
It's, or can, it's not debatable according to your table. If it's a motion to table, we can't debate it. But it's in my.
We have to move some of those statements that were made.
I actually talked to the coaches and this is exactly what they told me, so.
Those dollars are not verified, but we can.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and if we, if we do table this, then we do have opportunity to, to clear up those discrepancies. So at this time, we'll call.
Can I ask our attorney, is that correct? Are we not discussing? I have a, a parvataric procedure, Chief Chief. Are we not allowed to discuss a table motion?
Yeah, since your, your, your motion is to table it, then that pretty much shuts down all discussion of it. That if there is dispute about, you know, figures or anything, that can be discussed at the next meeting, you know, once it's brought up again.
Okay, we do have that motion and seconded, table this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Sorry, were there two opposed or just one?
I just heard one. Or were you, okay, there were two, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm still not clear, Karen, did you oppose?
Oppose.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got item N, possible motion to sign request for the FAA approval of agreement for a transfer of entitlements. And again, there's information in the packet. This is a common practice among airport improvement program airports where money is allocated but not spent on a certain approved project, then reallocated to another airport. And the amount of this transfer totals eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And I guess we do need council approval to do that. I'll accept a motion at this time to approve that transfer of entitlements.
Make a motion to sign the request for an FAA approval of agreement for a transfer of entitlements. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we do sign that request. Are there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry.
Mr. Goff, I will need your signature on that form too, so maybe I can grab it from you tonight.
Okay, thank you, miss.
Yeah, thank you.
Item O, motion to appoint Collette Miller as, to the Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee. She's agreeable to serve if appointed. She's relatively new in the community, but the golf course committee thought that she would be a good addition to the committee because of the outside perspective that she would bring to the committee. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to appoint Collette Miller to that position.
I'll make the motion to appoint Collette Miller to the Southern Hills.
Golf Course.
Golf Course Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Collette to that position. Is there any questions, comments or discussion?
No.
If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion does carry.
Can we, can we combine P Q and R since they're basically all travel requests?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would do that?
I'm sorry, I have this here.
He wants to combine items P Q and R since they're all travel requests.
Is that a motion?
I would say it's okay since they're all the same subject matter.
Did I make a motion that we combined P Q and R? I recommend that we approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded we combine items P through R. And if you have those that have information in front of you, is there any comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry. Move on to the finance officer report.
I'm going to step up on how everyone's windows are up. Yeah, I'm just like, great to meet you. Council members, y'all have in your packets on the informational side, the financial reports through the end of May, included in those are the standard yearly profit loss summary report that shows revenue expenditures in total by fund. The fund summary report that shows budget versus actual for the revenue and expenses so you can see how the departments of the city are doing compared to our budget or plan. The cash balance reports for current balances at our main Wells Fargo checking account and our Bank of the West checking. And the investment reports by institution and by investment type that show all of the cash assets of the city. We do review these at admin finance, but if you have any additional questions for me, please don't ever hesitate to ask, there's a lot of information in there. Like to talk a little bit about election day. It's right around the corner and we're ready. All the information has been delivered to the precinct superintendent and they plan to be here at six A M tomorrow morning to set up for a seven A M to seven P M election day. We have races in Ward one and Ward four. If you live in either one of those wards, please be sure to get out and vote tomorrow. We have some wonderful election board workers that I like to recognize, Judy Hanson, Fran Berkhold, Hank Spurlich, Pam Anderson and our superintendent Laura Bachelor. I often hear some woes from other cities regarding getting election board workers. We don't have that problem here and those ladies are all part of the reason we don't. And so we need to be sure to thank them for their commitment to ensuring that democracy stands and respecting all the voters and their time and them coming out to vote. We're, we're happy to have them and they do a great job representing our city. Another right around the corner subject is the municipal budget season. Nolan and I have been working on a little bit and we've been talking in some committees a little bit about the upcoming budget season. We will have a workshop that you just approved, Karen and I, to go to and also all council members are also invited to attend, put on by the municipality July thirteenth. I have also shared this budget workshop information with our two new ward representatives effective in July for Ward two and three. And depending on the results of the election tomorrow, we'll also share that information with our new council members in Ward two and four to invite them to attend. It is in peer, it is a one day training, make it there and back in the same day and it's definitely worth the time. I will be out of the office again, June eighth through the fourteenth, dealing with some personal matters, so thank you for allowing me the opportunity to do that. Karen will also be out for that week at finance officer school, but we have Mary and Barbara Friend who run the city before and can do it without us, so just wanted to make you aware that that's where I'll be and she'll be just gone Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, so. That's all I have in my report.
City administrator, Nolan?
Given the calendar for June, we're not going to meet again until after the South Dakota Scholarship Project adjunct. So with that, we'll have the parade on June seventeenth downtown, I believe, at ten o'clock. God, particularly the odds there, I'm not sure if Chief Close reached out to you yet about doing parade per. But for those of you that are doing parade control, you'll have to stop for it, folks have done around ten o'clock, that'll be somewhat of a hindrance, but all in all, it's great to have the South Dakota, again, Hot Springs, and also looking to change things up and kind of give a new program to the public as well as incorporate our downtown businesses, as you guys see on the agenda tonight, they're drawing in other businesses to kind of build the event into the Hot Springs fabric, which we truly appreciate them putting down roots in our community. Apart from that, Bob touched on this a little bit about the asphalt repairs and chip sealing taking place. We do look in the near future to do asphalt repairs on the areas where we have water projects, so wherever we've excavated, most likely the next three weeks, proximal three weeks, we'll do some asphalt repairs. Ideally, we'll combine with the tubiness at the airport to reduce our mobilization expenses throughout town. So as we get closer to those projects, check Facebook, be sure to subscribe to Nixle for any temporary closures or inconveniences that way. Last thing is June twelfth is actually the day we'll start doing the resurfacing of the tennis courts. So when that begins, we ask that all use of the courts cease, give full access to contractor. Approximately with weather being cooperative, it's a two week period for them to seal the cracks, to kind of straighten some areas, fill in some low areas, although they can't resurface everything or re-level everything and then finish it with a top coat. The big differences you'll see is we'll do tennis court lines for the two courts, but also pickleball lines on those courts for more longevity or lifestyle games to reduce the hot springs. Then on the basketball side, we'll actually line the basketball court. And we also have a pending donation from Yelp's organization here in Hot Springs for new basketball hoops on the side of the basketball court area and also helping us offset the cost of new nets and most likely relocating the tennis backboard or the wall over to the tennis court side. And on the same subject of recreation and not to contradict Andrea, but we do have new equipment, it's already arrived today and the rest of it will arrive tomorrow, so we can be assured that the teams now do have new helmets or adequate helmets, bags and are well supplied for this, this season. So we'll talk more about that, I guess, at the finance or another committee and hopefully we can have any action on that next meeting.
Okay, thanks Nolan. Moving on to the mayor's report, again, I want to thank the council, I think we took some important steps tonight moving forward with the Bull Falls paving project and we do have some, a busy time coming up in our community. We have the Mid-South Dakota Pageant grand opening at the VA Call Center, all coming starting next week, so a lot of things happening in Hot Springs. We're in the process, as been mentioned, to identify chip seals for the streets this summer and pressing that we do develop a set of priorities for the years to come so that we can really do a good job of maintaining the health of our, our, our streets. We honored the water department at our last meeting, last Thursday, they earned their keep. We had a big water break across from Taco John's and they did have it fixed by midnight. Fortunately, the weather was nice. We had good coordination with South Dakota D O P, our own street department helped out. And I just want to publicly say thank you to those individuals that spent a pretty long day ensuring that that water break was, was repaired rather quickly. Again, as been mentioned, we do have an election tomorrow. We have candidates in two wards and I encourage the people to vote and consider these candidates who have a, a forward looking vision for Hot Springs. Myself, the city staff and the council will work together with whoever is elected and we must because that's how our democracy works. So I look forward to future councils to continue the progress we've made during the past couple of years and help people in Hot Springs forward. Truly, we keep doing that, the best is yet to come for our community, so thank you very much. And at this time, I would accept the motion to go into executive session. We do have a legal matter and personnel matter that we need to discuss. There will be an action, quite probably be an action after executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session after a five minute break.
Or legal and personnel.
Legal and personnel.
It moved and seconded that go into executive session after a break. Council back into session and we do have. Council back into session and we do have one item that will need to make a motion that we, I'll accept a motion to pursue a contract with our attorney general.
I'll, I'll make that motion to pursue a contract with easily, is it a long name?
Is it called her back?
You, she wasn't, yeah, why don't we go ahead and make sure she's.
Yeah, let her.
Thank you.
Are we calling her back?
Yes. We had, I told her that we would save.
Well, I just thought, oh, oh.
No, thank you. Very good.
Okay, we're back into executive session. Okay.
Okay, for all those again, except we do have a motion on the floor to accept, to obtain a contract from the Beasley Law Firm for services to Hot Springs. Has there been a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries and we will get with you Garland and those issues that we discussed will iron out that contract. Thank you. At this time, I accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
I'll second her.
It moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much.